It is 5:30 PM on Monday, June 13th, and I'd like to call this work session to order. The first agenda item we have is city updates, so Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, City Council, and Mayor Grattasar. I do have a few city updates this evening. And the first one is with respect to COVID. Sarah Joseph, the Public Information Officer for the Public Department of Public Health and Environment, held a meeting this morning to update PIOs from other entities throughout the city and shared some of the following information. The June COVID-19 positive case counts through yesterday were four times higher than they were in May. So that was concerning and eye-raising. They are attributing the current increase due to the Omicron subvariant, the BA212.1. This week's cumulative positivity case count as of this morning was 368.7, and last week I shared with you was 163.3. So you can see the significant increase, and the one-week positivity rate was 9.8%. There are eight days of stabilized hospitalizations from COVID at Parkview, and I have no information for anything at St. Mary's Corwin. I also had she reminded us that the vaccine buses have been approved to continue throughout the state through September of 2022. And the bus schedule is being developed, and it'll be on the Health Department's website and also available on the city's website. And I'll share with you more specifics next week when I get the schedule for Pueblo. As a reminder, July 11th, Dr. Brad Roberts, he's the new medical officer for Pueblo County and City Health Department, will be attending the work session, and both he and the Executive Director or Health Director Randy Evans will provide an introduction as well as a COVID update a month from now. I'll move on with respect to ARPA. The very good news, the second tranche of funds was received last week in the amount of $18,203,500. There are two items on the agenda this evening with respect to ARPA. The first is under the first reading, item N1, and it is upon the mayor's recommendation and Council Flores's recommendation for a $20,000 to neighbor works to stand up or to support their foreclosure prevention program as the foreclosures in the community have increased significantly. And the second ARPA item on the agenda this evening is item R1, the public hearing in support of a $328,500 request from the City-County Library for their continued year two of their summer reading challenge program. Next Tuesday, next Tuesday is June 21st, the mayor, city staff, and I will present at work session an update on all of the 2021 Tranche 1 ARPA funds, all the projects, their current status of the projects, and the impact of the funds that you have awarded that council did last year and this year, and also a discussion of mayor's recommendations and city councils' priorities for the Tranche 2 project. So that is on the work session agenda for next Tuesday evening. The most recent 2022 Community Satisfaction Survey went out to all of you and is posted on the city's website. And the mayor will be hosting a community connections for those interested in asking questions on August 8th at 9:00 AM at the Riverwalk at the Betra Amphitheater, and the staff will be extending an invitation for all of you to attend, as well as a presentation to City Council on August 8th in the evening in a work session. As some outstanding items that you've requested of me and the staff, the ordinance to transfer $15,000 from the unappropriated fund balance to City Council's contingency to replace the approved support of Goodnight Barn, it will be on the agenda for June 27th. And I believe the last item of update is, at councilor winner's request also, asking for it to be received last week, was an update on the city staff vacancies, and the report was prepared by Marissa Pacheco, the HR Director, and sent to last Friday via email. And it was a pretty lengthy and detailed report. And that does conclude the city updates this evening. Do you have any questions of me or any direction for future reports?
Thank you, Ms. Solano, for all that information. What questions are there from councilors? Being done. Thank you, Ms. Solano. We are then going to move on to our, we have guests here from the Department of Local Affairs who are going to be giving us an update, so I'd like to call Mr. Garcia to the podium, please, and any guests as well. Welcome. And whenever you're ready. And can you please state your name for the record?
Yes, Tara Marshall.
Well, good evening. I'm Rick Garcia. Excuse me. I'm the Executive Director of the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. It's wonderful to be here. Thank you, Council President, members of the Public City Council, America Ratachar. Thank you for the invitation. It was wonderful to receive that. And excuse me a second. I'm a little arsed from the quick drive down here.
We also had chicken tonight, so maybe it's that.
Life passed on that, so I can't blame the chicken. So, but it was a pleasure to accept the invitation. I understand there's some newer council members, and this is an opportunity to have a little bit of dialogue about the Colorado Department of Local Affairs and how we interact with local governments, particularly here in the city of Pueblo. So we do have a PowerPoint presentation. I'm probably not going to be able to get through every slide based on the amount of time that's allocated to us. And maybe questions and comments, I sort of want to leave time for that. And Tara Marshall just introduced herself as our local government regional manager, serves this county, the city, and other counties here in southeast Colorado. And I did want to also introduce Fallon Miller. She may come to the podium if there's questions. She's our devo for our Division of Housing. She deals with all the housing-related activities, proposals and packages together that ultimately get to the State Housing Board. So let me just quickly begin with a quick overview of the Department of Housing. Most of the work we're going to, I'm going to describe tonight is really related to two prime divisions, our Division of Local Government and our Division of Housing. However, Dole has had a few other activities on our plates. We're also responsible for the Division of Property Taxation, which that division works closely with county assessors throughout the state. Also, the Board of Assessment Appeals, when someone doesn't like the evaluation of their assessment, if they didn't get satisfaction through this local assessor's office, they can appeal it through the Board of Assessment Appeals. And then obviously, the Executive Director's Office, which orchestrates and is the main steward of all the activities at Dole. We operate our Division of Local Government with eight districts throughout the state of Colorado. As I mentioned, the southeastern district is the one here that Pueblo, you know, Pueblo County is involved with. These regional managers like Tara actually live in these areas, and they represent a certain number of of local jurisdictions that are assigned to them, so they interact with those local jurisdictions, counties, cities, as well as special districts on a regular basis. We work with local government communities primarily in the arena of technical assistance, financial assistance and grants. We do disaster recovery support, working with other agencies in Colorado state government to respond and work on recovery issues around natural disasters, affordable housing and homelessness issues. And obviously, as I mentioned a moment ago, our property tax administration. I did want to share with you a few of the most recent investments. We might be missing a few here. Seems like there's always dollars coming to Pueblo from the Department of Local Affairs. But our public facilities investments in rehabilitation, construction and planning. Someone mentioned earlier the Goodnight Barn, is provided investment of $530,000 for that. We did put a plan into the Aquatic Center for $25,000. The Arkansas River, which I think included the bridge, and I think the governor was here last summer to do that ribbon cutting, $1.2 million. And then just across the street here, $800,000 for an HVAC system. Housing investments are plentiful. The most recent is the fuel and iron activity at $3.5 million. That building down at the end of Union, which I'm sure everybody's aware of. Crawford Town Homes with, at the Senator Cristo Public Housing Authority. We just, well, we didn't, we actually just approved a supplemental to the State Housing Board for that project. High Park Gardens, Casa de Sol, the Pueblo Rescue Mission, Halo Barrier Mission over on, which I used to call Fourth Street, which I know is now, is it still Fourth Street? Okay. I thought it had been reconstituted here. So I don't know what happened here. Can we get back to the? There we go. And also Sunset Senior, senior, or said or resident housing projects, as well as the Mountain View Town Homes, and something called The Right Place. So Pueblo is always on our agenda for economic support for housing as well as other kinds of community development activities, and we're always happy to support Pueblo. Just need to be pointed to something. It's just a little, it's just a little delayed. I did want to start with some of our newer programs. When I was down here with the governor a couple of weeks ago, Councilmember Flores asked a question about mortgage assistance, and I did want to bring everyone up to date on that. There was an erroneous date on the website, which I think's been corrected. The full program, which is called Housing Assistance Fund, or mortgage and/or mortgage assistance program is being funded by ARP dollars. The state of Colorado received about $176 million. I wanted to make sure I said that correctly. We've been piloting 10% of that since January of this year, trying to get through our emergency rental assistance program, which was the primary focus, and trying to keep folks impacted by COVID housed around the state. But we're launching the full Housing Assistance Fund program for mortgage assistance on July 1st. It will take a little time to scale up to that. So meanwhile, if there are individuals in your community that I heard a moment ago in the updates, that are on the edge of foreclosure or in foreclosure, these funds are dedicated to help these folks pay those mortgages and get caught up. There's a variety of other opportunities, things such as HOA fees, property, delinquent property taxes, things of that nature that these funds can also be useful. We also will be, in fact, I think the RP closed just last Friday, nonprofits around the state like Neighbor Works, for being example. And I don't know if they responded to the RP, but that kind of nonprofit organization that's already doing housing counseling work would be the natural kinds of organizations that will receive support to run those those programs in these communities around the state. So we're well on our way. We don't have the tight timeline on this source of funding that the other ARP dollars do. So this is going to be around for a few more years. I did want to just quickly touch on the emergency rental assistance program that I mentioned a bit earlier. We had over, I think about $800 million of dollars in a couple allocations of ARP emergency rental assistance that we have been deploying around the state. We're actually getting close to starting to wind down that program because the money is getting out much, much quicker than it was in the early, in the early iteration. Pueblo County has received 2.4% as a percentage of renter households in the county. I suspect most of those were probably within the city of Pueblo, not only in the county. So it's a combination of both the city and the county. It's actually one of the highest percentages statewide, next to some of the metro area counties that you would expect. Are in the neighborhood of 4.6 in higher, we have a couple rural counties out in western Colorado like Lake County that has a higher percentage of participation. But in general speaking, 2.4% of the renter population has received support to pay the rent, bring them current, and keep them housed. So that's one of our more successful goals. And then just quickly want to touch on some of our, I'm going to pass up this slide. It was more specific. So one more in there. There we go. That's the one. The recent legislative session was quite productive for Dole. We had over 20 bills that yielded a tremendous amount of resources to us, mostly ARP-related, re-appropriated dollars to deal with housing, community, and economic development activities. But I did want to share with you some of the highlights related to programs that we'll be administering to support local governments throughout Colorado. Obviously, the city of Pueblo will be one of those. The Modernization of the Colorado Act, I didn't really know a lot about that, but that was one of the highlight bills. HB 221013 is a microgrid program for community resilience grants, which is primarily identified for smaller towns and communities around Colorado. They can put a microgrid in as backup energy resource in the event if there was a disaster of some sort, their energy source somehow was cut off. We also received in excess of $500 million for HB 221304, which is really grants for affordable housing projects around the state. We're in the process now of getting that rolled out, where local governments, nonprofits, housing developers can make application to develop affordable housing projects throughout the state, very much akin to the kind of programs that we've been running already within the Division of Housing. One creative program to support smaller nonprofits around the state was HB 221356, which is a grant program for small community-based nonprofits. Dole will also be administering that program throughout the next few months. We also received updates on our plus-up dollars for broadband support around Colorado, and as well as direct support in dealing with natural disasters, things like the Marshall Fire in the Boulder, Boulder community. We are involved with administering a rebuilding, a home housing rebuilding program for individuals that had their homes decimated and potentially were underinsured. So that program is still in the throes of getting rolled out, but that was one of the final bills that actually came out of the legislative session. And truthfully, we couldn't do all this work, working with local communities without our regional managers around the state. You're very lucky to have Tara Marshall at the helm down here in southeast Colorado and serving the city of Pueblo and the county of Pueblo. So I'm going to let Tara now take a few minutes and talk a little bit about how she approaches getting these resources in the hands of our local community leaders.
Good evening, Madam Chair, council members, Mr. Mayor, city staff. It's a pleasure to be here. As Director Garcia said, my name is Tara Marshall. I'm the Southeast Regional Manager. I've been working with the city since 2019. I wasn't going to cover all these, Director Garcia covered these grants. They're great. Energy Mineral Impact is a major fund source. It's funded by severance tax and federal mineral lease, and the city has access to those funds through these programs right here. I would say that I started in April of 2019 on a Monday, and on a Wednesday I got a call from a gentleman that wanted me to meet him downtown and have a cup of coffee. It was Councilmember Ray Aguilera. So he was the very first elected official that I met in my past three years here. And of course, he wanted to talk about the Aquatic Center and the Community Center, which was a big project of his. I just wanted to touch on a couple other things. I meet with the mayor's office regularly. I meet with the staff, touch base every couple of weeks, and meet with the mayor himself at least once a quarter to go over, obviously, different funding activities or technical support or city goals. So the Conservation Trust Fund, the five-year total for the city is about 6.2 million. You're using that for your parks and recreation, and that comes through Dole. The Community Revitalization Grant Program is a program that we partner with OEDIT. Director Garcia mentioned the 3.5 million that went into fuel and iron. This is an additional $1 million that came through the Office of Economic Development, International Trade, in partnership with Dole. We also have that DOH investment, and I would love to point out my colleague sitting behind us, Ms. Fallon Miller. She is my counterpart throughout the region who works on housing while I work with local governments. The Coronavirus Relief Fund was another fund that came through Dole to the city. About 6.5 million you were able to invest for your citizens in different activities. Once again, I stay in regular contact with the mayor's office, visiting with staff. Department of Local Affairs, under Director Garcia's guidance, also participates in the Just Transition Conversations, which the city of Pueblo is identified as a Tier One community. So there is specific support coming through the legislature to the city from that initiative. And then I also participate in PACOG. I attend Action 22 in the Southern Colorado Economic Development District, which is based in Pueblo. It's 13 counties, Pueblo being the hub of those counties. They work a lot in broadband and in some housing, particularly housing support throughout the rural part of the region. And then finally, my colleague and counterpart Fallon Miller holds a monthly meeting with the mayor's office and the city staff, and I participate in those along with Ms. Miller to make sure that, as Director Garcia indicated, over 300 new housing units in Pueblo. We want to make sure that Pueblo's accessing the funds for housing that's available. And I believe I would turn it back over to Director Garcia for any of your questions. Thank you.
We're open for questions if we have time.
Yes, we do have a couple of minutes for questions. So what questions are there from council, Councilwoman Flores?
Thank you for that presentation. I think it's really valuable to know all the activity that's going on. When we met a couple of weeks ago regarding the foreclosure situation, we, I actually added an ordinance. In fact, it's going to be on first reading tonight. I really wanted it as an emergency ordinance because there's so many people right now in the queue that are facing foreclosure, and we were given the information that we wouldn't see any money until November. The 176 million that was given to the state, we were told Pueblo was destined to get 8 million. Is that number correct? Eight million?
I'm going to defer to our housing person here. I'm not aware that they're allocating dollars specifically to communities. Okay. But if there are needs at the moment, as you have identified, we do have resources available now. We can start getting those individuals into.
The reason I'm asking is that we were just going to put a Band-Aid really temporarily, where the county and the city were going to put in 20,000 to at least have the foreclosure counselor in place to be able to deal, you know, with this. This is not new for Neighbor Works, by the way. They've been doing this for 10 years. In fact, their track record with the little resources that they have is quite good. Normally, they see about 10 people a year, and over the last 10 years, they've helped about 304 people. And a lot of times, people just don't know where to go, and they know how to go through the system. And in most cases, they can talk to the lender, and in most cases, eight out of the 10 cases that they help, 10, eight out of the 10 are successful, actually successful. So my question is whether or not, you know, they can access this money immediately, and I think she might be here when the ordinance is up for. Well, I take it back. It's on first reading, so she's probably not going to be here. But again, I really believe that this is needed because one of the numbers that I got is frightening. The 200 individuals in Pueblo are in the queue to be foreclosed in August. And so it's really an important issue, and I think I'm going to go ahead and move that forward. And if it changes, I want the council to be aware that we won't need this ordinance if, in fact, they can, they can, you know, that number, that 8 million number, I don't know where, I mean, I don't know where, I've written it down two or three times over the last couple of.
Oh, yeah. We, as of right now, have not delegated certain amounts, city or county. That's probably, I'm assuming, it generalized based on population and where households are sitting at this time. The need is known, the money is going to be there, and it will be available starting July 1st for applications.
Okay, that date's important for us. I'll follow through with Neighbor Works on that. On the rental assistance, how is that accessed? A 2.4 of the rental population, I mean, if you had a rental population of 10,000 people, that would just be 240 people. So tell me what that number means, that percentage, I mean.
So Mr. Garcia actually misspoke on that. The 2.4% is 2.4% of our total that we've put out. That's how much Pueblo's gotten. So if we put out 100 million, they've gotten 240,000 of it, or 24,000. Okay, so it's not of your population. It's the total amount that we've spent.
And how do you access?
Through applications. We've received applications online. People outreach just through the state. They get online, see our website, reach out to anyone at the state, and we direct them where they need to go. We also help landlords directly, not just the tenants. So the tenants can apply themselves. The landlords can apply if the tenants are, you know, sometimes tenants are nervous to ask for help or whatnot, and so the landlords can do it as well. And then we also have agencies on board that are outreachy. I know in the region, total concept is doing part of that program for us as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilor Mastry? Just to clarify, so you haven't appointed the agency locally that will be distributing that funds and who we have to work, who the constituents have to work with in order to apply?
For the mortgage or renters?
The mortgage.
The mortgage is, no. So they will be able to apply start July 1st.
Okay, but it's going to be doled out through a local agency, distributed through.
Correct. The agencies can apply July 1st.
Oh, the agencies.
To start getting those ones.
Meanwhile, the, are resources available now? If they're those individuals that you described, councilmen, that are on the edge of being foreclosed on, we need to get those individuals into the pipeline as quickly as possible. We can do that through the group in, in the Department of Dole and Division of Housing that actually is administering those dollars now. We still have the 10% available. Meanwhile, we'll be awarding contracts to these nonprofits around the state that actually will be the conduits locally to make the program.
This for the last 10 years. So what they've really asked is for help in funding an additional counselor, foreclosure counselor. And I think what I hear you say is that there won't be any, well, Neighbor Works, I guess, could apply for the money directly with your department. However, that's, that's an application into itself, which could take another month before you appoint them or provide funds for them. So you're saying that all the foreclosures now have to go directly to your office?
Yes, we have a staff that's dealing now with the foreclosures in the pilot effort that we launched in January.
Does that work pretty, pretty well and pretty fast?
My understanding is that if there's folks that are really on the edge of foreclosure, that they will work quickly to get the resources they need. get the resources they need to satisfy the concerns.
Thank you.
Ms. Alano.
Um, thank you. Uh, city council had approved the an extension for ARPA for the Financial Navigator Program that is actually run through our neighbor works. And so our our local citizens have an opportunity for assistance in submitting those applications. And I'll reach back out to Fallon and Tara, um, uh, tomorrow uh, for to make sure that we have the correct website so so that they have the correct web website to apply directly. And then also so our local agencies have the the right application. Fallon and I can follow up. Thank you.
Any other questions? At all? Um, I guess I'm curious about the, when we're talking about timelines for agencies who are going to apply. And then, you know, the the agencies will get awarded and then they can open up um, applications and house specifically to talk talking about the House Bill twenty-two thirteen oh four. Um, and then the House Bill twenty-two thirteen fifty-six that are specifically for nonprofits. Do you know when those, when when those applications will be available?
Those. Those program guidelines are still in process. That legislative was just passed. Um, so that those will be a while longer.
We have a pretty robust, um, I know there's a group, um, in Pueblo that's specifically looking at housing. So I I would like it if we could be updated once those regs are published. So that way we can, you know, start coordinating and getting the, um, appropriate agencies to apply for those monies.
Absolutely. We will keep up with that on our regular.
Excellent.
I could just add that thirteen oh four in statute, uh, we have to have the the program defined and rolled out by September first. We're we'll likely, uh, advance it before September one. But the, uh, the, again, the expectations are, there's a variety of uses for those dollars. Rental assistance. AMI levels as low as thirty percent, some as high as a hundred and forty percent. Uh, homeownership, uh, multifamily housing. It's it's the full gamut of housing needs. So there could, you know, the the programs are going to have to be segmented in a way that uh, everybody will understand and then we'll just roll them out.
Sounds good. Well, seeing no other, um, questions or comments, you know, we talk about affordable housing all the time as I feel like as a council. And even last week, we were having a conversation about the need for affordable housing. Um, and and making sure that it's actually affordable to the the people that live here. So I appreciate that we're having these conversations in the city to make sure that no money is left behind on the on the table for the state. So, uh, Councilor Flores.
I just wanted to thank you too for, uh, you know, the the homeless shelter that we have here in Pueblo. I know you worked hard on that for us a couple of years ago. And it's been, um, it it's it's really helped, you know, uh, diffuse the homelessness a little bit. You know, it's still a big issue. But I don't think it would have happened. I I know that you took on this issue personally and I wanted to thank you. And then on the Aquatic Center, uh, thank you for the planning grant. Uh, is there any possibility if we put all the pieces together that your department could also help us in building it? Uh, and I know that we have a lot of pieces to the puzzle we have to put together. And I know that you've contributed funds to other projects that we've had and obviously would be on a smaller scale, but is that a possibility?
Uh, I think there's a possibility. I think we have to look at all the numbers and see where you are in the process. Um, when you briefed Governor, uh, the last time, um, I was here, uh, I wasn't familiar with, uh, the gap issues with, um, RTA. And I don't know if those can get solved quickly enough. But, uh, if there's other funding sources, maybe general fund appropriation from the General Assembly is another, another possibility. It's possible we could participate at some level.
The the big question in the room is whether or not the governor had the authority to make that change on the distribution piece. And uh, everybody that we've talked to have said, yes, he does have the unilateral ability to do it if he wants to. So if you could prod him for us, I'd appreciate it.
And and Councilman, I I do circle back with Jeff Kraft. I think he's the Office of Economic Development and International Trade, uh, manager that's project manager that's in charge of the RTA. And let him know about the conversation. So I I would suggest that maybe circling back with him. I know you've had conversations previously, might be, uh, a a good next step. Sure.
We'll see no other questions. Thank you so much, Fallon, Rick and Tara, um, as our guests from DOLA. And we will continue on our agenda. So thank you so much for being here.
You're welcome. Thanks. Thank you.
Um, our next agenda item is, um, learning from the American Civil Liberties Union. Um, and I think I see Ms. Richardson online. So, Ms. Richardson, whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. And thank you, Mayor, for opening the doors to Pueblo Open. Me and my team were here a couple of months ago. So I'm coming to you for two reasons. One, I want to share with you our desire and commitment to form a statewide presence throughout the Colorado. And we really see Pueblo as an important community. So we are coming into the community a couple of months ago was not a one and done. It was an opportunity to build relationships that we want to continue and foster. We've met a lot of good people there. A lot of the issues that we heard, I just, um, glad I joined early because I've heard you all talk about solutions to housing. So there are a lot of great things that we could do, um, together to move not only Pueblo forward, but to improve the lives of Pueblo's citizens. Um, and so with that, I have a brief presentation that I would like to share to summarize what we learned over there. And then to, I have two partnership opportunities that I would like for you all to consider and refer me to whom I may work with, if you so choose, to build out these partnership relationships. So I can, while with this coming up, I can give you a little background about me. I, um, became the ET, um, ACLU Colorado back in March of twenty twenty-one. Um, transferred here from Atlanta, Georgia. And moving through in the pandemic to a new place is not for the faint of heart, but I'm so glad I made the decision to come here. Color, I found Colorado to be very welcoming. The social justice progress that you all have made across this state is outstanding. So I'm pleased to be a part of that community to move that tradition forward. Is the presentation ready?
It looks like we're pulling it up right now.
Okay, perfect. Okay, as I shared, um, June of twenty twenty-one, we embarked upon a year-long series of listening tours. And Pueblo is one of the communities that we targeted to come. And I'd like to share with you the findings from that tour as well as an opportunity for put future partnership opportunities. Next slide. I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but as you know, ACLU Colorado is the state's oldest and largest civil rights organization. For seventy years, we've protected, defended and extended civil rights and civil liberties of all people in Colorado. Next slide. So this is the tour that I talked about. We started, um, and we are continuing them through twenty twenty-three. But up until June of this year, we held thirty-eight conversations. We met with civic community groups, donors, uh, educated educators, youth and public institutions to learn what issues were important to them and how we may partner to address them. And that initiative is called our Expanding the Table for Justice. Justice is not complete until everyone has a seat. It's a tagline. Next slide. Okay, so if Pueblo, we were there March eighteenth and nineteenth, and you see the various groups that we met with. Um, and as you will know, the number one issue that was raised was housing, the lack of affordability and accessibility for housing. And I was glad I was part of the conversation to hear how you all are moving forward and addressing that in a proactive way. The second most, um, in issue of concern was opioid epidemic. And connected to that was mental lack of mental health resources of people experiencing drug addiction. Next slide. We had a session with the Mayor's Youth Council, group of dynamic young people who really are the next, uh, city council members and agency heads and mayors of your city. And these are the two issues that they raised, most important for them. The first one was cyberbully, cyberbullying, which twenty years ago, none of us would have even been known or thought of what that could be, but they consistently talked about girls are primarily targeted on social media. And when they reported to schools or to adults, there is a lack of consistency in how it's being addressed. The second was discrimination against trans youth. And they felt that some teachers and counselors that they interface with didn't accept the use of pronouns for young people who were identified other than the, um, two um, main genders of male, female. And they were actually discriminate gate discriminated against when they use these pronouns in both the classrooms and in other, um, sessions interface with them. Next slide. So they came up with two solutions. One is they feel that and protocols could be created that mirror what we already have in place, sexual assault response. So that the victims, um, is number one supported throughout is, um, their trauma and that the outcomes of the perpetrator transparent and consistent. Under discrimination against trans students, they suggested awareness training for faculty, staff, students and even parents regarding inclusion and longing for non-conformative identity groups, including of course, trans youth. And then establish protocols within the school and other places that youth interacted with to establish a culture change toward exclusion in the schools and institutions. So those were the issue areas that were raised by, uh, the Mayor's Council as well as by the groups, the various groups that I mentioned before. Um, so I don't know if you want to pause here for questions or you want me to continue on through the presentation. What's your pleasure?
I think we'll reserve our questions until the end.
Perfect. Okay, so these are the two partnership opportunities. Next slide that I would like to discuss with you uh, in terms of an official partnership between the City of Pueblo and ACLU Colorado. Next slide. Beginning in, um, July, the fourth of July, we're going to kick off a voter engagement campaign um, to increase voter turnout for the twenty twenty-two midterm elections. According to the Secretary of State, only twenty-seven percent of Pueblo citizens voted in the twenty-two elections. Now, I tell you, coming from a place like Georgia to a place like Colorado, where you all have we have the gold standard in voting access, less than a third of the voters participating in our democracy is really stunning. So we would like to work with you for you to identify local community civic and youth groups that we may support. You all, these groups are already on the ground. They have relationships. We're not interested in coming in and taking over, being the the big presence in this community, but how we can support these groups from behind the scenes by providing um, funding as well as resources for training volunteers, their meetings, materials and their activation of voter engagement activities. So this is the way that we will come in and support what's already being got um, being done with the goal of increasing voter turnout. Next slide. The second came out of the, um, spark in the Mayor's Youth Council conversation. And we also heard it, um, throughout the other groups as well. Is that how do we engage the next generation of change agents? I would imagine, uh, with that interview, each one of you, you talked about a moment probably when you were under thirty, that you decided that you wanted to live a life of public service. And so we have an opportunity of extending that um, like, uh, that commitment to life of service with the next generation. But we need to be, I feel, more intentional because there are so many competing, um, forces for young people's time, you know, social media and all the things that we never thought about. It's really takes up a lot of your time and agenda. So how do we then provide a vehicle so that we can have Generation Z, um, engaged in impact and social change? And in a recent survey by Forbes Magazine, they noted that forty percent of Generation G has a sense of purpose and they have a desire for positive impact on society. They just don't know how to do it. So the ACLU would come in and conduct, conduct workshops for groups ages fourteen to seventeen on how change happens. What is, how do you identify a topic? How do you do your research? How do you organize, uh, young people, other young people and adults to care about this? What are strategies that you can get attention by either elected officials of those powers to be? And what policy looks like change? Does it really happens? And you, as you know, unless there's a policy, oftentimes, young people don't realize that. They think they showed up for a demonstration or protest that's changed, but not realizing they need to go the extra step to put that in the policy. So we would talk to, teach them of how to do that. And at the end of this training, each group will leave with a social change play, plan that they can then go out and implement in their community. So we will provide all the materials and resources to come down and do these workshops, um, at your pleasure. Next slide. So this is my contact information. Um, you'll please receive a copy if you don't already have of this presentation. Feel free to reach out to me if there are other groups that you would like for me to connect with or any ideas that you have in terms of movement of potential partnership forward. So thank you. That's my presentation. I look forward to any questions or comments that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Um, what questions are there from council? Councilor Flores.
Uh, yes, thank you for that presentation. Uh, many of the issues that you identified, uh, really have to do with children that are in school. And, uh, I'm curious as to how you're communicating with District sixty and District seventy, which is our two school districts, along with several other charter schools. Uh, many of the issues that you've identified, we have no authority over as a city council. And the state district does. And I'm just, and that you'll have that conversation with them. Um, I I served on the school board, uh, back in the nineties and, uh, uh, at that time, uh, there were individuals in this community that did not allow LGBTQ to even have a club in this, in the high schools. I mean, it was, it was like pulling teeth over a very simple thing. Um, and, uh, I'm I'm happy that, uh, that this issue's out for discussion in the community because I think it needs to be dealt with. So I appreciate your presentation and, uh, just want to make sure that you have that communication with our school districts.
Thank you very much because I wasn't aware of District sixteen, seventy. So may I circle back with you to talk more about how I can be connected with them?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and if you need contact information, I'm sure that the mayor's office can definitely provide you with the, um, with the, yeah, Ms. Alano is going to give you a call.
Perfect.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you so much for your time, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, of course. Uh, and, um, like I said, Ms. Alano will give you a call for a follow-up with the school, those two school districts.
Um, thank you again.
Yes, thank you. Uh, moving right along with our agenda, our last agenda item is around the Pueblo Energy Advisory Commission. So can I have Ms. Getz and Mr. Hayes to the podium? And if. Just really fast, can you make sure that your mic's on?
Thanks. Um, my name is Edgy Walrath. I'm the vice chair of the, um, Pueblo Energy Advisory Commission. And I'm here today with the Lori Getz. And Lori Getz is from San Isabele Electric. And she is the, um, Business Development Manager at San Isabele. And I hope you all know Andrew Hayes, who is the Pueblo, uh, Director of, um, of, of, of Public Works. And, um, the reason we're here tonight is we wanted to give the council some idea of what we've been up to and and where we're going to go from here. And we wanted to give that information to the council. And we thank you for, again, for having us out here. And, uh, the most important thing we feel is the opportunity to keep everyone informed and to keep moving in a positive, positive director direction. So with that, I'll be leaving and and we have, uh, our presentation for you. Thank you so much.
Just press it once, Laura.
Oh.
Oh, are we good? All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you. So as the Energy Advisory Commission, we've been tasked with helping the city determine how it can achieve one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty five. Per a resolution that was passed by city council. This resolution was also passed by Pueblo County. So we have a slide deck that is being pulled up here. That we'll use to just kind of guide four key initial recommendations that we've come up with to date as a starting point. All right, we can move. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Okay, so each of these four key recommendations are specific to the city. So we're just thinking internally right now how the city can lead by example by just making some initial changes internally with its own policies. Before looking outwards and seeing what can be done at a community scale. So our first recommendation is to proceed with another energy performance contract. So a former energy performance contract took place on all on all city facilities. And this was really just kind of a low hanging fruit attempt at energy savings. Usually a first phase of an energy performance contract is looking at lighting in facilities because there are a lot of savings to be had in switching out your lighting. And so this was completed. But it has been a number of years now and we're at the point where the city could really stand to benefit from another round of energy performance contracting. And this is such a powerful way for communities to save energy and save money on their bills. That the Colorado Energy Office has a whole kind of program and set of staff dedicated to running energy performance contracting. And they oversee this process, working with a number of pre-qualified ESCOs is what they're called, energy service companies. And so, again, the city and the county are both very familiar with this process. And any follow up questions you might have, I will deflect to Andrew for you. But this is, I think, one of the easiest recommendations for the city to act on that could have a significant, could result in significant savings. And in the upfront requirement for you would be about a, up to a hundred and eighty thousand to commit to having a, an investment grade audit performed. So this would be the energy service company comes and brings all of its staff to review city facilities. And then draws up a list of prescribed changes that they would recommend be made that would result in significant energy savings. But part of going through this process again at this time would mean that you could include additional goals such as we would like our buildings to be net zero or as close to net zero as possible in working towards our one hundred percent goal. And so energy service companies are very active in helping communities achieve these goals. And so there are a lot of tools that they could help this utilize to help the city make significant progress through this energy performance contracting process. At going one hundred percent just internally as a city. Another topic that has come under discussion is new construction requirements. So this, it's not that often that the city builds a new facility, we know, but right now the city is constructing new fire stations. And so part of the conversation is, again, why doesn't the city lead by example by looking at constructing net zero fire stations? And if the city truly is committed to achieving one hundred percent renewable, it does not make sense for the city to be constructing new buildings with any fossil fuels involved in that construction. And so, again, this is an opportunity to lead by example with these new fire stations and have them designed to be net zero. And when we speak about net zero facilities, we are looking at, hold on the next slide here. Buildings that are by definition highly efficient, all electric, except for specific opportunities when you need additional forms of generation as backup for resilience purposes. Or in cases where that technology just does not exist, or it is so exorbitantly expensive that it would not make sense to construct with that at this time. The third piece is that it's powered by on or off site renewable energy to help it achieve that zero zero footprint, carbon neutral footprint. And then generally, they take advantage of opportunities to benefit the electrical grid. And so that often comes as a benefit to the city. You can take advantage of time of use rates. You can send power back onto the grid to benefit Black Hills Energy. So a number of different purposes that this building can serve when it is highly energy efficient. And incorporating renewable energy. So, and to top that off, so looking at net zero for the fire stations, but also taking the next step and considering a possible ordinance or policy, purchasing policy, something to that effect that would codify your desire as a city to always first look at building net zero and then have a number of conditions under which, you know, that it would not make sense to do so, but have anyone who responds to an RFP for a building present options for net zero facilities. So number three would be a no or low emissions fleet vehicle purchasing policy. And so again, we would say that this is something to go after because the city should be a leader in vehicle electrification, both because of the carbon savings. But I think you will see in in future adoptions of electric vehicles in your fleet that it comes with substantial fuel savings and maintenance cost savings over time. So again, this is an opportunity to potentially adopt a policy, a sustainable and resilient fleet policy, something to that effect. And start budging for charging infrastructure. A piece of this is also look at right sizing your fleet and really figure out if make sure you have the vehicles that you absolutely need. And pare down when you do not need vehicles in certain circumstances. And also look at route optimization. So make sure your bus routes are running as efficiently as possible. There are a lot of tools out there that you can utilize to help you save money and ensure your fleet is operating as efficiently as possible. And so I know you have fantastic city staff working in transit and fleets that can speak to a lot of the tools that are already being implemented. So this would just be another layer, adopting a more formal policy around this. And so here are a few examples of policies that other communities have adopted. So I believe the first one is Denver. All fleet vehicles should be replaced with an electric vehicle, for example. Assuming that a comparable model is available from a mainstream manufacturer for within ten percent of the total cost of ownership of the gas version. Other communities have a one hundred percent electric bus procurement by twenty twenty five goal. Others have gradual increases, sort of a step up approach as they expect technology to progress. So those are just a few examples of what a fleet policy could look like. And again, a tiered approach to purchasing. So you could say, you know, when we go after new vehicles from here on out, we're always going to prioritize prioritize a zero emission vehicle if that's not available or for some reason does not meet our goals or our needs. Then we would look at a tier two, tier two vehicle, tier three, tier four, tier five as an example. And so finally, energy staffing is our final recommendation. We're seeing more and more communities begin to staff up in sustainability offices, energy offices, and in different offices that reflect the goals of that community and the needs of that community. So this is a big ask, one hundred percent by twenty thirty five, and you have fantastic staff working very diligently to make everything happen and to take a look at a lot of these issues. They, they're far ahead of our recommendations in some cases, the more we learn about the proactive nature of a lot of our state, city staff. But if we want to expand this goal outside of just the confines of the city operations itself into the community, this is when you might want to consider looking at additional staffing and energy manager coordinator, community relation specialist. Or you can go as far as creating an office of energy efficiency and renewable energy and office of climate action. Something to that effect that reflects this one hundred percent goal and your commitment to achieving that goal. Again, by bringing in additional capacity to work with our business community. To work with our residents, to work with our nonprofits, to really get the results that we need to see one hundred percent at the community wide scale. We've, that is everything we had. So happy to answer any questions or if Andrew wants to add on anything there.
So I'm just here tonight to piggyback on the presentation just a moment, just to kind of talk about what the city is already doing with respect to a couple of these initiatives. In particular, great, thank you. So Laura mentioned that there was a energy performance contract that was completed about ten or eleven years ago. We've been reviewing that and looking at the results of that energy study. Technology has certainly changed in the last ten years, and so there are opportunities potentially out there for us to continue to garner additional energy savings. These contracts are very effective tools for reducing the lifecycle costs of our facilities. So this is a big, big deal and important in the, in the long term picture of how much we spend operating our facilities. I think, again, the Colorado Energy Office has a program kind of set up already that has kind of right and left limits to help keep municipalities and governments and school districts on track with achieving the objectives that they've identified through these assessments. So there's an opportunity here for potentialists to go into another energy performance contract at some point in the future. The, the dollar value that's up there represents about the cost of assessing about half of our building's footprint. So we have about a million and a half square feet in inventory right now. Seven hundred fifty thousand square feet or so were assessed in two thousand and eleven. So that, that cost today is around a hundred eighty thousand to do that assessment if we were to do one. That assessment cost would then be credited to any projects that were also identi- that are identified. Those projects that are identified and adopted also have to generate cost savings over the long term. So this is a small upfront cost for potentially long, long term savings over a ten or longer term period. As Laura mentioned there, you know, we've done lighting, we've done some of the low hanging fruit types of projects, but I think there are some good opportunities out there, opportunities with respect to HVAC and other systems that are energy hogs on some of our buildings. So we want to target those particular opportunities and get those updated as quick as we can. The new construction requirements where Laura mentioned about net zero on our fire stations. So you're, you've got a couple of ordinances and resolutions coming before in the next couple of weeks that are related to the fire station. But we have already sought bids for design work on our new, three new fire stations using a net zero design standard. So that's our intent moving forward. And though it's not codified in policy, it's good practice. It makes business sense. And it ultimately shows that Pueblo is going to be a leader in this front. So this is a, this is something we're kind of moving forward on with respect to these three projects. It's certainly something we want to consider for other large new construction projects as well. But adopting a specific standard or adopting certain goals, those are different ways that other communities have tried to achieve this net zero standard in, in, in other communities. With respect to the lower no emissions vehicle fleet, we're obviously, you mentioned transit. We're also working right now to do some electrification planning, not only for our city fleet but also for the community at large and trying to identify places where public charging infrastructure might be important as we move forward and the, the public's need changes for additional electric charging infrastructure. So there, there are a number of initiatives going on, but the procurement piece of this, we're not mandated by code or anything like that, but we are seeking electric vehicles where possible. We're hopeful that in the future, additional utility type vehicles or work trucks might be more, more electrified and they might be more available to us as well. Comes with challenges. We certainly have to find ways to implement the infrastructure that's required for that. But that is something that we are, again, actively working on. Sorry, and the fourth one was the energy staffing. So at this moment, we're closer to the option one. I've been working with the Energy Commission, kind of as a staff advisory member and trying to, I guess, inform them about how we're working forward right now and opportunities that might exist within the city. Where we can use support and offer technical advice on how we're moving forward as well. So there, there is a range of options there and there you can see in Colorado and across the country. Communities have a number of different ways that they approach this type of program. But Laura's presented some different options there for the city to consider in the future as well. So with that, I'll turn it back over.
Well, thank you, Ms. Getz and Mr. Hayes for that presentation. I just, I did really basic math and we're thirteen years away from twenty thirty five. So just to put that in perspective, thirteen more years. So what questions are there from council? Counselor Flores.
We have a good example of a net zero building that was just completed with the Pueblo Neighborhood Health Centers. And I, I think most people are curious about number one, what, you know, a building like that, that would be net zero versus just a standard commercial building that's fire resistant and has just the normal HVAC. Is there a percentage of, of how much more that's going to cost if we go net zero, which is one question? And then the second question is, assuming that the net zero building is, is saving you money because you're not paying, you know, utility bills continually. Does, is there numbers there that say that you can offset the cost, additional cost by the savings? And is that a seven year period, a ten year period? And any help in trying to, you know, reconcile all that type of thing to the normal person out there?
It, it will certainly vary from building to building and can try and find data on a national average perhaps across buildings, but you know, something from a health center to an ice arena, you, you can imagine the massive variation and difference you might experience in commercial level buildings. But it's true, you do want to look at a lifecycle cost when you're assessing these buildings. Often it's going to cost more upfront to build net, net zero at this present time. But those energy savings are very important to take into consideration. Especially any opportunities to put that building on a time of use rate with your electric utility or take advantage of any special rates that might benefit the grid with that building. Or qualify for a special rate with your electric utility. I don't know if you want to speak to find any of your findings in that process.
Sure. So with respect to the fire stations, we haven't, we haven't completed design yet, right? But that design, there's a little bit of additional cost associated with the design work that goes into that. But that additional design work will also beget other, other design features in the construction of that building that will probably cost a little bit more upfront as Laura alluded to. Again, these are, these are business decisions where we spend a little bit more upfront to reduce the operation and maintenance costs of these facilities for the long term. I gave a presentation previously about, I think it was when we were talking about construction standards and we talked about lifecycle cost of facilities and the bulk of the money that we spend on our facilities really does come in the operation lifecycle. So these buildings, fire stations that we're replacing right now, some of these have been around since nineteen fifty, since the nineteen fifties. So sixty, seventy years, I think we've certainly spent way more in operating those facilities than we have in the, the initial construction of those. And I think that, that trend will obviously continue going forward. So it's really important that we spend appropriately upfront and not just try to minimize upfront costs, but really look at the total cost to the city of, to the city for operating and maintaining buildings.
My, my last question has to do with the ability of a net zero building owner being able to send back energy into the grid, I think to most laypeople. I mean, they're having a hard time understanding that, including me. Could you give us a simple answer, I guess, on how that's possible and whether or not that really provides credit, I guess, to the net zero building? And tell us how that works.
Sure. And so again, there are two ways to approach this. When build, when looking at going net zero for a building, you can do onsite solar, which we're familiar with as rooftop solar or perhaps a garden for the, you know, where you're going to park vehicles under. And then there's offsite where you get a credit for that. And to start with offsite, because it can be a little bit more complicated to wrap your head around. The energy produced from that. The energy produced from that is the each, in many cases, sort of each kilowatt produced from that comes with a credit. And that credit is only given to one entity. So if you sign up to offtake from that, even though the electrons may not be going to your building, the the contribution to the grid from that solar array, because it's a form of energy generation, is only credited to one entity and you would be that one entity receiving credit for producing renewable energy. And so that, again, it can be very tricky to wrap your head around and there are a few different ways to do it. But it's kind of a one for one credit when it's offsite. And for onsite, buildings would be set up with something called net metering. And with net metering, you are actively pushing, so you you're producing energy on your building. You're going to use any energy you need that's being produced at that time. And anything you are not using is going to get pushed back out onto the grid and it's going to serve your neighbors. And so that does come with a benefit to the electrical grid. In some cases, you can, you can flood the grid. But that's something for utilities to manage. And I know we're actively doing studies on it right now to see what the impact of rooftop solar is and different, you know, where it's highly aggregated, what that impact looks like on different pockets of our grids. But in many cases, it comes as a benefit to the grid to have that energy dispersed locally. And so the utility will credit you for any extra energy that you're pushing out to your neighbors to serve that grid. And so you will receive additional money for doing that. And there's a mechanism with Black Hills Energy, in some cases, to receive there's it's kind of a a flat rate for getting money back. But in some cases, you can get a flat rate plus a bonus on top of that. And so that is an option that is currently available to city buildings.
Thank you.
Councilor Warner? So I think an easier way to explain that, I have solar and they basically buy energy from from me and they sell it to somebody else. I think that's probably an easier way of saying it. And I think I paid about eighteen thousand for my panels. And I've more than paid for that in four years. Especially when you get the the benefit of the write off that the government has for push for for purchasing those. So I would encourage anybody to get it. I mean, I have electric bills that run eighteen dollars. So do it.
Other questions or comments at all? I would be in, I really appreciate the commission's tangible recommendations. I I think that some of these are really like low hanging fruit, small wins. So I would be in favor of finding the one hundred and eighty thousand dollars so that way we could do the performance, energy performance contract. I think that that, especially if those funds are then used to fix what's found in the audit, I would be in favor of moving that forward. I don't know how the other councilors feel about that. Councilor Martinez Ortega? Councilor Graham? Councilor Mike Street? Councilor Flores? Councilor Warner?
So would this be part of your code, Andrew?
You're talking
Would this be a resolution? Is it just a dream or is it actually a code?
So the energy performance contract would actually be a cured contract. We would go out to one of these ESCOs and
It's just for for city buildings?
So and this would just be on city buildings?
So it would be part of your RFP process?
Correct. So the funds we would need for that, we'd target specific buildings and footprint, particularly the ones that we know we have some opportunity to come in and get this assessment done. That assessment, it costs based on a square footage basis in general. And that cost, like I say, is applied back to any projects that are ultimately selected or adopted. In addition, any of those projects that are adopted result, they have to either result in savings or the the ESCO guarantees that the cost savings will be generated if we maintain the building in accordance with the standards that are set at the time the project is complete.
Sure.
It's it's a good opportunity for the city to take care of a bunch of projects.
Sure, sure. And then Laura, what do you think about people working from home? I know that during COVID, I mean, our air was much cleaner. You could smell the trees, you could hear the birds all day long. So do you have any studies on that? You certainly are taking a lot of cars off the road and you're not needing a lot of buildings that are energy hogs.
Sure, I do not have data for Pueblo. It's possible we could get with PDPE and see if there is any data, but we could procure maybe at the state level, pull some information that's been collected and certainly nationally, there's been some data released that we could look at. But yes, I would, I would guess that there is a, there was a measurable impact to our community.
Even with the airplanes, the air, I mean, even in Pueblo, you could tell the difference in the air quality. So, yeah, I would like to see some reports about that. Because if the option is, if this position can be done from the home or build a seven million dollar building, it seems like that person should be working from home.
So it sounds like Ms. Getz will follow up with Councilor Warner's request for additional information. And then in terms of moving forward with the RFP, there's consensus that council's okay with that. Final thoughts? Okay. Seeing none then, thank you so much for the commission's update today and Mr. Hayes for helping with that. I'm I'm excited that we're moving forward with tangibly with one of the recommendations. So, okay, well, thank you so much. And with that, there's no other business. So I will conclude this meeting at six forty six.